Oh, comment?
Yeah.
Oh, no. We, no, I don't think so. Hello, and to, okay. Anybody else? Um, we have Thomas and Lynn. When you're ready.
I should be able to.
We will open the meeting at six oh four. And are there any adjustments to our agenda?
Um, I was, I just have my contract for you guys to sign.
Okay. Um. Should we add that under new business?
Sure.
This is Venus. All right, and we have more. Um, next up is review and approval of minutes from their last meeting, and I have not had a chance to read this yet, so we can just take a minute.
All right, you're gonna have to start yours.
Sorry, is it the last one?
Uh, well, I had one sitting right here. Didn't even take off of it, but apparently I did.
I do a fact that I've been writing on it.
I want to show that. I put one of them.
Yeah, I did.
You need an agenda? I didn't steal your agenda.
Well, I thought I had one. Do you need yours?
No.
All right. I need to keep myself in line here.
Questions or minutes or anything? I'll move to accept the February twenty seven of twenty twenty five minutes as written.
Yeah.
Second. One figure. I didn't see anybody sign up for public comment, so next is town to report.
That's all right. Okay. See. Uh, I'll start here. So, um, I don't remember if it was last meeting or one of the last meetings that we had, but we talked about um, using the remainder of the ARPA funds to uh, buy a generator for the utilities district. Um, and since that conversation, we have had to have work done on one of our pumps. And um, that bill came back at twelve thousand dollars. So, um, the utilities board had asked me to come back to you and ask how you would feel about using that eleven thousand dollars to pay for the pump repair instead of a generator. Um, it would still fall under the water sewer infrastructure, so it would still be a allowable expense. Um, I told them that I would bring it up to you.
I forget. It's the generator. Was to power the pump stations in the event of a power.
Right. Right.
Just because right now, if power goes out, we we gotta have Dan Dale come up here continually, you know, pump out.
Yeah. So while we still do need a generator, but now we have, we had an expense that we just, we had to replace it.
How much ARPA funds?
It's like eleven thousand.
Or almost.
Yeah, it's the whole.
And that's pretty much what a generator would have been too, so if not more than that.
Any chance of finding a grant to cover the generator?
Well, that's, that is an option, and so that's something that we can look into that way, because if we go this route, it's gonna be a lot easier to look for a grant for a generator for the utilities district than it is to look for a grant to forgive the the part that we already replaced. Right, so, um, yeah, yeah.
Okay. That makes sense. I.
Do we need to?
Yeah, do we need to vote on, on that, or just?
I mean.
I don't know.
I would make a motion.
Just to be safe.
That we.
Cause you probably made a motion to.
To cover the pump repair, as it seems critical.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? On the paper.
All right. Um, so that gets the pain off my to-do list, figuring out how to do that. Um, rebel. So, we kind of talked about this in the budget meeting, but just to reiterate, um, the assessor was finally able to give me a rebel cost estimate, which came back at a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a complete rebel. Um, I know that other towns stretch it out over three years to kind of help offset the cost a little bit. Um, we would be able to do a rebel until, if they were the ones to do the rebel. Um, and if I had to guess, most anybody in that business is also gonna be at least a few years.
Peez.
Um, but they wouldn't be able to do it until April of twenty twenty nine. Um. So we have a few years to put aside some money for that as well. Um, if we went with these guys and did it in twenty twenty nine, we have a few years to put away money towards the hundred and fifty, that way we wouldn't have to break out the rebel into three separate years. Um, but depending on how the next couple of budget cycles go, it might, we might think, okay, maybe we should break out the rebel into three years and break the town into like quarters or thirds or something.
Did you ever figure out the audit, find out the exact surplus number?
Um, I actually just got the twenty twenty three audit, but I haven't been able to look at it yet. Um, they just sent it to me on Tuesday, so that will give me a closer number than what twenty twenty two was, obviously. Um, and so, yes, I will have it. I do have it, I just haven't looked at it yet, so. Um.
It seems reasonable to at least consider that.
Yeah.
Oh. Certainly need rebel, and if we're looking at four years out. Not sure how we.
Right. Right. That's what I was thinking, like make it some sort of like reserve for assessing or something, a, a cap, which I'm not really sure why it was never thought of before.
Some of that surplus, because we were thinking we were higher than where we really should be. And that's money that we already have, that we don't have to plan for, and we say, well, we can get rid of this much.
Right.
Which in turn is going to bring us more revenue, because it's gonna get us adjusted.
Right. Yeah. That's definitely a possibility. Um, so, and like I said, um, the assessors plan on doing, I factor during commitment time. So June, July is when they plan on doing it, and that estimate was five thousand for that.
Five thousand.
Um, the next. I wanna say update, but it's more of a question. Um, so last Tuesday, when I came to work, I took my laptop out of my bag and it was broken. I could not tell you how it got that way. I always bring it in from the car, put it on the bar. When I took it out of my bag, it was broken. Um, right now, I'm using a monitor in the office so that I can see the screen still and do work, but it leaves it so that I can't work from home, so uh, we have money in the admin reserve to buy a new one, but that requires your guys' permission to do that.
That's why we had that money there. Is, is, and I just have to ask, is it repairable?
Um, so I reached out to Sierra, and they said that the cost to repair it is almost as much as a new one. And they can't, and there's no warranty, so then you might as well just buy a new one to get the warranty and all of that. Uh, they were supposed to be sending me a quote, but I had, if I had to guess, it's gonna be somewhere around what we paid for this one, because it's only been almost eighteen months or something like that since we bought that one, but so like nineteen hundred?
They have insurance plans on them like phones?
They should. Um. I, they do have some sort of program where you pay them every month and then you, but.
They probably get what you paid in and.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Right. So.
Or nothing to prove.
Well, it just, it makes things a little difficult.
Yeah.
And.
It's required for the job. Um, and the fund, I'm sorry, I was looking, like, we have the funds available and then.
Yeah, in the, in the admin reserve, yeah.
Okay. Okay, with, do you need a vote on that, or?
Yeah, if it, you have to, because it's popping out of reserves.
Reasons. Um, I make a motion to go read or spend the.
Yeah, spend.
Yeah, the money out of reserves for a new laptop. Any other discussion? All with favor.
All right. Um, so a few months ago, we were talking about having some sort of map at the EV charger for the local businesses and whatnot, and I kind of tasked Jade with that little piece. Um, and she kind of came up with two different ideas for you guys to, just so that it gives her some sort of direction to go in. Um, so this side is basically all of the local businesses that you can walk or drive to. And then this one is, you are here, and here are the locations that you can walk to.
Yeah.
So she didn't know which direction, like, cause she didn't know, like, if we put something like this up, are the rest of the businesses that you have to drive to gonna be like, well, how come I'm not on this line or whatever? So she didn't know, like, this one just basically has, like, their logos kind of, this is what's in Monson, this is what you can visit.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
But how are they gonna know how to get there?
Really are.
I like the other ones. So this one, or.
Can we do both?
Yeah, make it like a.
I mean, I don't see.
So you'd have to be bigger than that anyway.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, she could combine both.
Or combine, like, put the logos around the outside, like, she don't care.
But that. Okay.
I mean, cause I think they're, they both have their.
Right. Right.
Their merits.
Yeah, I agree. So.
Nice.
Can I just mention collaborative is talking about updating the map that is several years old? This sounds like a duplication of effort, even the town should be doing it with a collaborative.
Well, this is to have a, like a, a sign or something at the EV charger so that.
At the charger itself.
At the charger itself.
Okay.
Right.
So that people know.
Okay.
Where they can walk to from where, like, you are here, you can walk.
Hear that part?
Yeah.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, so, um, and then, you know, each spot has a number, and then over here, the number is what it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Maybe this could be the basis for what gets updated.
Right.
True.
So we're not duplicating.
Well, I like that combo.
Yeah.
Combo, got it.
Unless she's.
I, I doubt that. I think she just wanted, I gave her a very broad, this is what I want from you, and she was more like, I need you to tell me what you want.
She did a good job.
She did do a great job.
Thank you, Jade.
Okay. Um. So, the GIS update in tax maps, like for twenty twenty four, is, has been completed, and you know, the, the online maps have been updated. And we are finally going to have tax maps printed. So we have an updated printed version of them that we haven't done since twenty nineteen.
Wow, awesome.
So, um, we were, uh, if you remember correctly, we were gonna do this like last year, but we were almost the finish of the update, so it didn't make sense to have them printed if the update was so close to me. Um, so, we have reached out to the person that's going to print them, we just have to send over the, the files and go from there, so. Um, the compactor had a situation last week, and so the compactor was down for like a week. Um, we haven't received the bill yet, but it was repaired and back into working fashion, but it definitely puts it into our head that we need to start thinking of when it's not gonna be fixable.
We keep discussing it, and that was actually a question when we do get to that on their proposed budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay, but that was.
I reached out to two companies today for both eleven hundred.
Okay, good.
And we determined that we have a little bit of money aside for transfer station reserve, like fourteen thousand.
I think we've kind of anticipated.
Yes.
At least.
Yes.
Longer than I've been.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's well past his expected life.
Yeah.
And Jim wasn't sure when I talked to him if it was repairable or not.
Right.
Did you repair it?
Well, we weren't sure either, and at first we called an electrician, because that's usually what's wrong, but then the electrician, yeah, some.
I called him.
Yeah. So, the electrician was like, yeah, not, not my area specialties, but I can at least tell you what's, what's broken. And I was like, well, that's more than what I could do. Um, so I will let you know once we get the bill for that there repair. Um, but yeah, we have reached out for some quotes for a new one, and, you know, it's, it's reflected in the budget that we are going to fund it. Hope, not so much in this year, hopefully, but like sometime in the near future. Um, streetlights, so the little black streetlights are not working right now. It, we had an electrician come and look at them, and there's power leaving the box. So, it's somewhere under the ground that's broken, um, but he has to wait until he can get to the ground to investigate where it's broken. And he said one of the lights was hot.
Really?
To the touch, so he just disconnected them completely for, or turned them off completely right now, until we can figure that out.
How long have they been out?
Uh, a couple of weeks, probably.
Does that have anything to do under there, like, with thawing and water or?
I don't know.
It shouldn't, and if, if that is affecting it, then that's what's wrong, because it shouldn't be.
Right.
Things are underground, they're supposed to be.
There was also that light bulb that got hit.
Well, that one was replaced too.
Yeah.
But when that gets hit, that pulls on the wires, and if you break something on the ground.
It did, it did, and, and actually when Jeff Moore replaced that light, he fixed all that, because the others were out too, or at least one of them.
Yeah.
But then they were all working for, for quite a while.
And now they're not, so we'll figure out what comes with that. Um, the shoreline zoning ordinance, so, um, I received the shoreline zoning ordinance back from DEP, all signed and official, so the twenty-two version, um, is now the active version on our website as well. Uh, the only other piece is, I forgot that we updated it again in twenty twenty-four to include, um, the designate, not be a designate and be the CEO.
Oh, right.
So that will have to go back to the DEP to be, to, I, I can't imagine that they're gonna have to review the whole thing, that's the only thing that we changed. Um, but nonetheless, I will remind her that we did that. Um, and then shh, I gave a copy to James as well with the amendments that they had us um, include on the, on the back. It has a conditional order and everything from DEP on it, so. And then, I think that's everything that I had that's not on the agenda.
I know you've been busy preparing the proposed budget, current budget, are things?
Uh, so I didn't do a current budget, because the budget that I gave you has all the current year-to-date stuff on it.
And I didn't look at the current, I was looking at the foes, anything.
But nothing just jumps out and screams, okay, this is a problem.
Also?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um. Wait, cycle reports. Um, now she covered everything on my list, let me just go down. Um, and some things you're gonna cover. Do we have any more information? Uh, we talked previously about the solar bill and.
Uh, no, um, honestly, I had not even had time to reach back out to him, because he's not, it would be different if I had to call him and he'd just pick up and I could have a conversation and that.
I remember.
Would be off.
Just be hard to connect.
Yeah, it, it is, and, um, I kind of, the whole solar situation is, um, hard for me to wrap my brain around, so I really have to like strategically think out what my questions are gonna be and bounce those questions off somebody that actually knows, but.
And, yeah. Can Glenn help?
Yeah, so.
So I, I is, there, there's a point where we can just not pay, I think, calls.
He doesn't.
Then don't pay.
Isn't that crazy? Like, we went like six months.
Like.
And there was.
Yeah, if they don't call, because they, the, the bills were being sent to an email that wasn't checked or, I don't know, something, and, and yeah.
I would. I, I mean, at this point, since they haven't rectified that, since it's been put in, is that why it wasn't done?
Yeah.
No, I don't think it was ever.
Well, the, the first time, what they considered to be rectified or whatever, um, was really credits that we were, we got anyways, so like.
Right.
It, it wasn't that they owed us them, it was, they belonged to us already, so like, but it, it wasn't really doing what the contract said.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah.
I know Glenn is your guy, right?
Right.
To reach out to, well, he, he might be a good resource.
He offered that, and, and shortly after we discussed that with Glenn was here, it was in the news that um, PUC, um, had been telling people to double-check their solar bills, because there were some errors.
Right. Right, and so I, I could be wrong in this instance, but I think that was more for the community solar versus, because this is our, our, like, technically we own.
Right.
Or at least.
Right.
The panels, so, but.
But it, I mean, it's totally separate from, like, me just going out and buy a panel, but the backyard, you're paying somebody else for that, whereas if I buy the panels, it's all on me.
Right, but it's not the same as the community.
Community solar, where you get, um, net billing.
Right.
Yeah, that was, that was different.
Right.
Can you hear me? Just, just Glenn?
Yeah.
Oh, Mike.
Yeah, uh, we don't actually own those. Uh, Monson doesn't own those.
Right.
Uh, we pay a, a monthly fee for the electricity that they, at the end of the year, they're supposed to settle up and say, well, we owe you some of the money back, or you owe us more, we generated more, but we don't own the physical asset.
Right. See. Uh.
So it might, I, I, I think it sounds worse than I mean it to sound, but stop paying until, un- until they rectify the situation, like they, like they're con- contractually obligated to do.
And like, one of the stipulations was, okay, well, there's no internet down there, so I can't.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I got internet down there, so you could do it, and now, and even since we have have gotten internet, there's been no, like, great, thanks for doing that, or any sort of commission, and like, I reached out to say, okay, there's internet down there, and so.
What are our specific questions that we need answers?
Mostly like, why, what is the holdup here, that, why can't we?
Why can't we?
Why can't we do, rectify this and get the credits that we?
So that's what?
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna know exactly. Paying the same amount, which is the agreed-upon monthly amount, but it's never been settled up at the end of the year since trade.
Right.
I mean, I would assume there's, like, if, if we don't pay that bill this month, that the money just stays.
We try.
And stays in our accounts.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not gonna spend it on something else.
Right.
So when it gets solved, and they call and say, why haven't you paid us for a year, since six months wasn't enough? Then we'll still have the money.
Right.
To pay them, I mean, I don't know, Glenn might have a better idea if that's actually a, a really terrible idea.
No, I, I think that's a good idea to, I would, I would send them a letter and say, we will make no further payments until the reconciliation is done per the contract.
That's what I was gonna say, we've, we've only done phone calls.
Right.
No documentation or written.
Right.
Documentation that we've reached out to them and, and even say, our next step is to contact Public Utilities Commission, I don't know. Something that will get their, their attention.
All right, well, I just put that back on the top of my agenda, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll actually have, well, if we don't have any more information, we'll be up a hundred and, no, three hundred and twenty dollars or something like that.
All right, thank you, and let me just get, think, yeah, I think that's all I have. Um. All right, town committees, um, Sandra, you have a vacation, want to?
We have scheduled town cleanup day for April twenty-sixth, which I forgot to tell you about, but you just did.
I knew it would be around my birthday, so.
So we're looking for, um, volunteers to help clean up the roadways and public areas in town, and we'll put the call out to high school kids who need. high school kids who need to be service hours for that in the past. And we've scheduled the plant sale for May twenty-fourth.
Saturday.
Saturday, May, that's what we decided, right?
Yeah. Chuck, we were talking, because a couple of years back, we had the plant sale the same day that the fire department had the boot drive. Do you, have you guys planned?
What are you doing it, May?
Yeah, we were all done again.
We haven't talked about it yet.
Okay, it it worked great, because you guys slowed the traffic down and people stopped and bought plants.
Okay.
Nice, nice, um.
I'll see what I can do.
Collaborate.
Well, you guys usually do your boot drives, like, what, Memorial Weekend?
And that's what this is.
That's what this is, yeah.
Memorial only, but it almost.
Yeah.
Saturday or Sunday?
No, May Saturday.
Well, then we scheduled it right then. Good job. And that's all the news for beautification, I think, yeah.
Sandra, collaborative?
Collaborative, we met with the media, town people the other day. Um, nothing new, coming up with goals and plans for the next three years, take ourselves in process of, so.
And then we had the regular meeting at the collaborative, and there was a discussion about the expo for this year, correct?
Like, right, right, expo, I mean, it's, I bet you that it's on June. Trying to get someone to take over, knows that Ramon's in the collaboration, doesn't have the
People power.
Ability, the people power to do that, so, knows it may or may not happen.
What date is that gonna be? Somebody called and said, something said May third, and something else said a different day?
No, it's gonna be June.
June, maybe it was June third.
Seventh?
June seventh, I believe.
Wow.
Yes.
June seventh.
June seventh, or Saturday in June. That's right, I'd forgotten about that, John, thank you. That was two meetings ago, that's why I forgot.
Yeah.
That's all I have, I think.
Okay, thanks, and recreation committee?
I mean, actually, they're, they'll do a summer festival because I asked.
The recreation committee will?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Alright, and Glenn, do you have anything for cemetery committee?
Uh, no, but I I just will note that the gym committee, we've received a few more donations, and it's up to twenty-seven thousand thirty-five dollars.
What's our goal?
Two hundred and one.
Two hundred.
We're still short of our goal.
That thermometer is like, yeah. Alright, thank you.
What, we're further than where we started?
Yeah. Alright, um, next up is CEO report. Thank you, Kent, for your report. Could you, in the future, could you put addresses on on the cases, just so we know? I mean, I don't know, for me, reference wise, I.
I say, who's Mr. Rowland?
He's got cell store, he's got the green siding. Big pile of demolition, the green living in between them.
Have you heard anything back from D E P on uh, up the places on the lake? Where where was, where was that left?
I don't know, what are you talking about?
Uh. We got the Mr. Atkins lot, and then the lot up on Island Road.
D E P is supposed to, or that this is supposed to be planting troops.
Then D E P is gonna enforce that?
Obviously, they say I have to do it.
Okay, so, yeah, so we need to know that, so that we can enforce that.
I don't.
So. Well, no.
You know, with the.
But if you had a copy of the letter from D E P, that would be great, so that when the time comes that we enforce it, we've got that information. Because I'm sure D E P has certain very fine guidelines as to what you can plant, how to plant it. And not plant it, move it, move it along, or the first time you have it out. And then on up on Island Road?
They were filling up forms for the D E P, I don't know how that's gonna work.
Kent, the last item you had, it says one call about powering and wheel setbacks?
Well, setback.
Well, setback.
Oh, well setbacks, I referred to C N P.
Yeah.
Which, what was that about?
Um, this guy looking at a property. See, it was on the road.
Where's that?
And there's a power line goes through, he wanted to know if there was any setbacks on the power line for the building, and I couldn't find anything in my books. Or referred to C N P to check.
Yeah, it would, it it would just help us to have addresses and and also dates.
I don't, those are your address.
Oh, not of that particular one, but the other ones.
Yeah, just like dates that you, the letters are sent out, or contacts and addresses, those would really help us. Um, we're the old business, Nineteenth Center Street.
Uh, so the last time we spoke, we talked about revising the findings in order and resending it, and I was told to reach out to Greg, so I did. His recommendation, he stresses would to be to go through the court system. Or if we really are adamant not to do that, he would prefer us to redo.
The whole thing.
The whole thing, and have Bernstein sure write each step for us.
When he says the whole thing, meaning another hearing, going back to the whole?
Yep. That's what his.
No.
So I think at this point, we should just move forward, like, either way, that works out well for Bernstein sure. I like, and and they've done some really good work, for mo- for us, I don't, I haven't I don't want to disparage them in any way.
Right.
But at this point, this is silly, it's been twenty-five years that this process has been going on, and I'm not exaggerating, that's not.
No, no, no.
Um, it's been twenty-five years, and the building clearly needs to be torn down, we have done our due diligence, we made a mistake on what we filed, and we've corrected that mistake.
Mm.
I have no problem moving forward, as is like every other town does in in the state of Maine, like we did on Water Street, when that building got torn down, like, I am beyond.
What's the attorney's concern? What?
It's an irrevocable act.
Yes.
You can't take it back when you tear down somebody's property, but.
But every other town.
It's done all the time.
All the procedure.
Done, and this would be the third one since I've been here.
Right.
And none of this ever went on before.
And this is a technicality, we forgot to write the findings under the findings section, and we all overlooked it, we own that.
Well, we wrote findings, but we didn't write the details of it.
Right. We didn't write them down on on
Facts, right.
Which were discussed in the hearing.
The form. We have since corrected that mistake, it was sent to Mr. Dunvee again, correct?
No, I didn't send it yet, because I wanted to make sure that that's where you guys were at for sign.
Okay. It's a hundred percent where I am at, this is ordering on the absurd at this point, and I think we're all, I don't mean to speak for you guys, I'm just frustrated because
I, I.
it's been two years of
Bad guts.
That it's actually been trying to move this forward, and it just needs to go away, it's a nuisance and a danger.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no attempt to rectify that. So I say we move forward with the letter as, or with the the
The revised findings.
Revised findings, but yeah, I don't know, I guess not.
Right, and then and then that revised letter gets
Right.
refiled with the court or the.
Right, and it'll get sent to him again, his clock for thirty days to to appeal will start to tick again, and it'll get filed with the registry, and then after that, then it should be all done.
Is he gonna be confused when he receives a second?
No, it says revised, so I
It does say revised, okay.
I would think that he.
And if he's confused, he will call us.
Okay.
Do you have, um, do you have a letter that that you're going to send with that? Can you explain what happened? It's like, is it worthwhile to to get ahead of it and say?
Maybe just a little note that says, hey, you know.
Right, it says, hey, we made
Yeah, sure.
An error, or or.
Here, here's a.
Word it, don't word it like that, word it words somehow, so you're not saying, oh, well.
Right.
Unfortunately, he was served the wrong findings in order.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the corrected revised.
Yes.
Real.
I think that's a good idea, because then maybe it.
I mean, he's still gonna call you, but.
He did it last time, that's why this is super sad that we have to do this, because now we're opening the can of worms back up.
So is that your goal down at the state house now?
Yeah, yeah.
Ultimately, yeah.
It has not been for that for.
Right. So it has been deemed a dangerous building. It just, yeah.
And we forgot to dot an I in this last round, and now the lawyer's telling us not to proceed, but I I think that's.
I just feel like it's not even forgetting to dot an I, it's like putting a little dot there, and then somebody arguing whether that's the dot to the I, or if it's a smudge on the paper. That's what I feel like, it it's gone past the point of ridiculousness.
Right.
So.
Without, without saying anymore, I'm all for moving forward, I think I've said enough.
I I agree, I agree, it's just we have, we need conclusion on this, and we've done our due diligence, I feel.
Yeah, we we followed the process that is lined out in MMA for us to follow.
Exactly.
And other terms.
And other towns are doing it, and I can almost put money on it, that when we tore down the buildings beforehand, there was not this much stress.
Oh, zero.
And and, you know, when, I don't know, it was just recently, you know, I shared with you guys the, what the law said, and the MMA's policy
Right.
guidelines, and we followed, like you said, we followed everything.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we could proceed without even sending it back to Mr. Dunvee, but I I think the right thing to grab is to send it back to him, give him another opportunity to to
Appeal it.
Appeal it, or whatever he wants, and then after thirty days, we can move forward instead of another year or more.
Right, I mean, the only thing we're, yeah, yeah. And it's only gonna cost us
Probably the bigger issue.
Forty dollar, forty dollar service fee to
Right.
have him serve it.
Do we need to make a motion to accept, to revise, or did we already?
You guys already signed, yeah.
I thought so. Because I would make a motion again.
Two motions.
Double motion.
Alright. Sad horse dead enough now. Alright. Onto snowplow. Snowplow contract.
Okay, um, let's see. Snowplow contract, um, so since the last time we all spoke, um, I was able to have another meeting with Chad and kind of discuss like how things are going and what I envisioned for the future and what he envisioned for the future. Um, we have the option to extend for another year, and that's what, um you know, we were kind of thinking about was the extension for one more year. Um, but I guess what my suggestion would be is to offer him a four-year contract, so that this, for a number of reasons, um. So I asked if he would be willing to do a four-year contract with a number with no increase for four years. So it gives us a solid budget number to work with, um, and eliminates the the guess factor. Um, and quite honestly, my personal opinion feelings are, if we put it back out to bid right now, it's gonna come in higher than the two hundred and forty mark. So and if we put it back out to bid, you know, the sky's the limit, there's no, there's no certainty there, there's no and then there, and there's no certainty that anybody other than him, and maybe not even him, would would bid, and then he just like in the past, he's not gonna bid two hundred and forty for this year, he's gonna bid higher than that, because he gave us the option for two forty, and um, so, you know, we kind of went back and forth with what number he felt comfortable with, and what number I felt comfortable with, and I think there, that there might still be room um for, I don't know, uh, negotiations there. Um, but the number that he said that he would be willing to do it for four more years with no increases is two forty. Um, and we talked about summer work as well, um, and if we he'd be willing to do it for for two forty, and at first, we were talking about having um the the summer work kind of contracted in in group with the snowplowing. Um, but right, and that's still, I guess, an option that we can go, um, but right now it's the two forty separate from the the summer work, so we can still explore other options for the summer work, but he said that he'd be willing to do summer work for the same rates that he had last year for the next four years, so it gives us a a good budget number to work off of, um, and it also gives us somebody that we can call when something happens, and we're not paying emergency fixes, we would be just paying the contracted per hour rate, instead of, you know, who is available and who can help us right now, and for whatever they want to charge us for, basically, which is what has happened in the past. Uh, this, you know, like, if we extended it for just one more year, and then we put it back out to bed next year, we're probably gonna be in the same boat with how things, and, you know, there's, there's just not a lot of contractors out there. There's not, and, um, you know, we talked about the communication barriers that we've had in the past, and how sometimes things aren't necessarily addressed in the way that I would like them to be addressed, but uh, since our conversation that Erin and I had with him, work has been significantly better, so.
One minor hiccup.
One minor hiccup. So, um that is just my thoughts for now, and I told him, uh, one of my other thoughts is, uh regardless if we went a one year or a four year, or even a three year, whatever you guys were thinking, or even if you decided to go out to bid again, is redoing the contract to be more beneficial for us in having a little bit more, um you know, accountability on the contractor? Yeah, well, that too, so redoing the contract to not pay less, uh, not pay thirty percent upfront, because that leaves us in a, a crappy spot when he doesn't do his job, I also think that there should be some sort of, like, right now, the stipulation is, oh, if you don't do the contract, we'll just ha- fire you and go find somebody else. How how, how do you do that?
Right.
Right in the middle of winter, how do you just go and find somebody else to do it, and that kind of just it it's not working for us, so I think that we should be, and I'm gonna reach out to Greg to see what the board ramble, um, so I'm gonna reach out to Greg to see what can we legally put in this contract to say, like, if he doesn't do this
Right.
you, we dock five hundred dollars off this pay, or we withhold money, or we do something other than, you're just fired, we'll go find somebody else, because that's not feasible. And, um, I did, you know, express those concerns to Chad, and he was on board with rewriting the contract and putting the necessary changes in there, and, you know, like she said, not doing the thirty percent upfront, and just doing straight across the board, or
I also recognize that there are upfront costs.
Oh, sure.
Like, is, and if if that's gonna be some form of hardship, I'm open to hearing why, and.
We used to pay ten percent upfront, and then have a final payment of the twenty percent, and then the rest of it.
We used to pay ten percent upfront and then have a final payment of the twenty percent and then the rest of it was equal payments. Yeah.
Right, and so.
Also the responsibility of the contractor, if he knows. Next winter, I'm gonna have to.
Right.
You know, be plowing, so I know what's wrong with my truck. I gotta get it fixed. Don't spend your money all summer long and then say, at least my truck's broken, I gotta plow any money.
Right.
I mean, that's their responsibility.
Right.
And. You know, that's one of the pros of contracting, you know, instead of.
Where you know.
Hiring yourself is the the upfront cost is the contractor's responsibility.
Right, right.
And, you know, right now, thirty percent.
That's him, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's almost half.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's kind of upside it. I'll throw in my two cents. I I like the idea for your contract. It gives the town consistency. You've worked hard to develop a relationship with him and, um, and it sounds. Like there's good communication now.
Yeah.
Um, and receptiveness, so. If that's workable and, you know, work on the the wording of the contract, uh, contact Ray and.
Yeah.
Yeah. My two cents.
So the, um, this, the term of this contract doesn't expire until May first, um, so. Yeah. Yeah, on May first, so, um. We can. Kind of piece together, um, as long as we're all on the same page, Chad included, I think there there's room for. Negotiation and then. Once I have the contract together, then you guys can. Vote on it and sign it then.
I don't have, I I don't have any, uh. Reason to to not go in that direction. I I wish there were ten plow guys out there competing for contracts.
Me too. Me too, it it would sure make my job a lot easier, I can tell you that.
I I think we run the risk if you put it back out to bid that it comes in significantly. It seems like, uh. First year of the contract, not very better than like this year, but, um, I don't know, Erin.
Yeah.
I'm all for. You know, keeping him on, the fact that he won't give us a set price for a period of time because. Any contract that you sign now, it's gonna have an increase every year.
Right, and anything that happened in the past, whatever that was, um. Clearly, you've established the ability to sit down, chat and solve problems, so.
Which, when's your co- your contract was only good for three years, correct?
Right.
In that, it's in there that says you could extend it for one more year, correct?
Right.
So technically, you guys have to put it out to bid.
We don't have to put it out to bid and let, is so, the only thing that makes it. So that we have to put it out to bid is our bid policy that the town has, which is also a conversation, um, so. Uh, like. Other towns, if they have a a contract already with somebody and they want to just stay with that contractor, they can and do, um.
Never seen that.
And so.
Most towns have a certain amount of money to house.
Well, that's the thing.
We didn't launch until fifty years.
Right, exactly. We had a contract with Farron Brothers forever and a day, and so.
Not that I want to blow up.
Right, yeah, I know. Um.
I mean, as long as it's.
Right. Right, and like. And and I'm, you know, willing to, I have to talk to Greg about the contract anyway, so I'll just run it by him to make sure that we can do what. We wanna do. I don't foresee it being an issue, but I have to talk to him about the contract anyways, um, but. If we. Because this particular contract says that we can extend it for a year, but if we had a new contract. Then that would replace this contract, so, um. Like, we wouldn't be able to extend it for four years and use the same contract and be like.
Right.
Like, that wouldn't be sufficient, but. Um. Yeah, so that's, that's my thoughts there for now. And like I said, the, having the summer work included in with the snowplowing. If if, there's some pros and cons there. The pros being, we have somebody to call when something happens. And also, I think it's extremely beneficial to have the same person on your roads in the wintertime is in the summertime, you know. This particular part of the road is. There's a bad culvert here, or just the knowledge of the road in general. So I'll. Get whatever information I get back and then. If all is go, I'll just bring a new contract for you guys next time.
Okay, and. We're gonna be discussing bid policy, so, um, that kind of goes with it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, actually, we should do it next, but let's do, follow the agenda. We have, um, grants next.
Yes, um, so the village partnership, um, so I reached out to Dawn and Matt. Um, and as soon as the, I received the final draft or whatever, so. DOT had to make their comments back to on the draft, um, I said that we didn't really have any comments other than there was. Like, we wanted more of a.
Shopping list instead of all the cart.
Yeah, exactly, um, and once, once we get the final. Thing, um, Matt said that he'll attend a select board meeting and kind of go over what the next steps are.
So in the email that you for- from him that you forwarded to us, there was something he mentioned in his bullets, like there was an agreement that this expires.
Yeah, so there was an agreement with, um, DOT that expired in December of. So, uh, four, so just a few months ago, because they figured this project would be wrapped up by then, um, but. If there were costs involved in the last two months, it's very minimal, like maybe a couple hundred dollars or something. Um, so it's not like. The whole thing is now null and void, it's just whatever's happening in January and February.
So it's not like the original.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
No, it's just, yeah, yeah, my heart kind of jumped there.
I read that.
Uh, no, it's it's just whatever cost happened in January and February, so.
And do we have to, like, extend that agreement with him or to resign something?
He did not say any, like. It was more like anything, any cost that occur now are our responsibility, basically, is what.
Yeah, what could those be and?
I'm really hoping nothing because once we get the final draft, I think that's what he kind of meant, like, if. If we're gonna do like crazy changes to the plan now, that's on us.
Okay.
Cause it would be more hours.
Yeah, yeah, for them to go back and, right.
That's a pretty true.
Very true.
Yeah. Okay, so, but man is good since you talked to him about.
Yes, yes, and on it, so.
Okay, cool, good.
Uh, sure thing. So Minnesota building, um.
You're still looking for a place?
Uh, yeah, and so the Elliott's Film Foundation actually reached back out to me and said. That they would, she would pass it along to the president and let him ponder it or whatever, and this was last week. Um, and she never got back to me and she was actually here on Thursday, um. But she didn't have an answer for me on Thursday, so. Uh, but I reached back out to the engineer and told him like what. We are trying to accomplish, and so he wants me to send him whatever I have for layout of up there and send it to him. Um, he also was trying to think of other solutions and stuff and. He said, really, the only way to put what we want for a building here would be to be like three stories, and he wants to take an elevator to the town office. And, um, but he said, he was like thinking, um, this house and garage right here, if somehow. They would be willing to sell, then we could kind of separate it out and put like the, just a public works garage right there and then keep the fire. Station and town office right here, um, but that would still rely on them wanting to sell then.
We just need to put a sign, you know, advertisement, anybody wanna sell the town?
Right, anybody in the village district, if you have land or property that you're willing to sell.
Have you had any indication from either Susan Collins' office or Invisking's office whether? Like.
Like this is still like a real thing or not?
Yeah, I mean. It 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 doesn't.
Not in recent times.
Okay, I I'm guessing that, I mean, still move forward, I'm not saying put the brakes on it.
Right, yeah. And there's. Other avenues that we can explore too.
I I think at some point, it may be. You know, do this, but I think we. We may need to to consider looking at having an engineer look at, and I don't know if that's the engineer.
Right.
Agreed with. What we can do to this building. Like, the last thing I'm sure Chuck or any of us want is for a fire truck to go through. Um, or, you know, there were some concerns when we engineered toward the building.
Right.
With structural issues that we saw, and how do we address some of those and come up with a plan?
Right.
If we don't move in the direction of a new building. How do we maximize this building and extend the life? Because I think that without money from the federal government. It it's. Dead letter, it's it's. We're not.
We don't have that kind of.
That kind of.
Right, no.
So I I I think at some point in the not-too-distant future, again, not saying not to apply.
Right.
When that opens up.
Right.
But. We should probably start taking a honest look at how we we could. Rebuild this space.
And, you know, like.
It's not the answer I'm gonna give us one.
Well, no, definitely not, but at the same time, we don't want a fire truck falling through the floor while we're waiting, trying to figure out.
Number one, yeah.
What's going on?
That that floor needs to be done, it was supposed to be done a year ago.
Right, that's what I was getting at, so.
Yeah, so, um. That's pretty much where we're at right now, is just, he's gonna look over the layouts of behind the gym and, um, see if, what. What we can do there and what the access could look like and make sure that there's no.
You still think the access would go off of doors to?
Yeah.
There's no way.
Unless he has some sort of bright idea of somewhere else.
Near the gym, right, there's none of.
The only problem there is it's uphill.
Yeah.
Like. Too bad, but, um. Who knows, maybe he has. Another. Bright idea that I didn't think of, but, um.
Is the the land next to the, um, the gentleman's name was, um, next to the old south store there, like.
Oh, Warriors, body of.
Yeah, uh, how much of that is his and how much of it is? Is the neighbors with the garage that's being demolished?
Ninety, ninety-nine percent of what you see is Warriors.
I was gonna say, that's.
They go, it kind of goes pretty much down behind South Store, over behind the house and then.
Yeah, so he owns like all behind it. There's like little small sections in front of it, but he owns all right now.
And he wanted.
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
Or he would trade for the land at the transfer station, correct? He didn't want the the compact.
Or no.
Can't trade it for the compact.
No, we get a lifetime lease with that map, like.
If that lot goes all the way down water street, right, I know water street, sorry, chipping out.
Chicken, I think.
Yeah.
Does it?
Yes, from up there.
Yeah.
No, he doesn't.
It's offshore, chipping.
Yeah.
But. If you use it the whole lot, the most down there, then we could make everything work out there, move the dump up there.
That's interesting. Although.
Because you wouldn't have that big giant hill to get up. The way that slips off in the back, you could make sure you back it up to the dumpster.
But if he wants a hundred thousand dollars an acre.
No, 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 you weren't even trading. That for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we also had to pay.
Not not.
No, the transfer.
The transfer station, that whole lot down there for that.
What I wanna know, what I wanna know is, there's a landfill down there that belongs to the town. I don't think you can just hand off a landfill to somebody else.
Did it, did somebody else own it before?
Also, shit, no, that.
Yeah. Right, so.
I was more.
Right.
If we could trade for the compact.
Yeah.
I'd be all for it, but, um.
I definitely throw it in, for sure.
Uh, alright.
So next step on that, um, what are you thinking?
Once, you know, I send. Once I hear back from Elliott's Film Foundation really is, and then.
And do we have?
Yeah.
An open date or anything?
They said March, but they didn't give me like a.
A deadline?
No.
Okay.
You gotta come to.
No, I, yeah, I, on their website, basically.
And it's still active.
Yeah, for now.
Still see the website.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Cause a lot of it's been shut down.
Yeah.
So we, but we just can't proceed to submit a grant until we have.
Right, a place.
Location.
Put it, or at least. Some budget number to. But like, land's not gonna just appear somewhere else.
I'm gonna say, you gotta, you gotta have a land before you even think about proceeding, because without land, you have no place to start.
Right. Right. So. So, yeah.
Then how, is there a limit on the grant again, mon- monetarily?
No.
We just have to have a place and you can.
I know, that's.
You're trying to include the purchase of it and the grant.
Yeah, and that's what the engineer was like, well. You would only be paying ten percent of that seven hundred thousand dollars, I'm like. No. That that's still a lot of money for just land.
I wouldn't be able to live myself, I paid that much for it.
Yeah.
And right.
That's stupid, I agree with that.
A hundred thousand dollars an acre is just.
Which could pay in ten percent of seventy thousand.
Right. Yeah.
Five million, plus there's probably cleanup that has to happen up there. Like, it's, you're gonna end up paying on top of that. Uh, maybe not.
And.
It would be a great place, like it would be.
Then, yeah.
But.
Maybe if I emailed him back and said, you know, the town really doesn't have seven hundred thousand dollars, could you reconsider?
It's worth a try, right?
I mean, the worst he's gonna say is fine, five hundred.
We'll put his name on a plaque in front of the building.
Right.
Me, no, yeah.
Alright, another horse that we beat dead.
Alright, um, bid policy, bid policy, what are the chances, eh, any of you have your bid policy that I put in your mind and then put about your? Uh, sorry. You might. I forgot that this was on the agenda and I was, I was so focused on the budget that. Cause the budget meeting was just me out more than the select working today. Alright, well, let me. Do you wanna skip this one and we can come back to it after I.
Sure. We go on to even since.
Yeah.
How contract for Jim, for the gym.
For the gym.
Not Jim, the gym.
The, alright, um, so last year, this, I guess, is more of a discussion right now than anything, um, but last year, we. Budgeted like forty-five hundred dollars to buy the gym. Because we don't have to the parking lot and. Because we don't have to the parking lot and blah blah. And so I asked Sue for. A detailed list of what we're actually being built for. And because for. Let's see. Yeah, December, so half of December was over a thousand dollars. To pick plow the gym. And so I started like looking at.
Cool class of gym?
So I started looking at like. Why is it two thousand dollars to plow the gym for starters, for one month, and then at first I was like. For a thousand dollars, Steve can just plow the gym, that's crazy, but then they have a clinic up there. So the clinic requires so much more um upkeep, I guess, um, than just the gym. So they have somebody come every single day. Every single day of the month.
No matter if it's.
No matter what, as a patrol slip fall check. That's eighteen dollars. So what I propose, or I would like to propose to Libra, is that we not pay the patrol slip fall check. And we'll continue to pay like the the plow, trucks, salt, sand, all of that. But the day-to-day slip fall, whatever, should not be our responsibility, I don't feel, because. They're not slip checking our in front of the gym.
Exactly.
They're slip checking in front of the, and then.
So, so, the last time I had an appointment up there, I almost slipped. So they're not doing a very good job, no.
Bringing genitals today, they oughta be.
Is there like a boundary in the parking lot of where our?
There is, actually, but it doesn't. I understand there, like, cause at first when we were talking, I was like, well, I'll just have Steve do it, because. I mean, a thousand dollars a month to plow the gym is a little excessive to me.
Half the part.
For half of it.
Do we even own half of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do, okay.
So, you know. While it does still seem crazy to me that to have it plowed is a hundred and seventy-four dollars. I still would be willing to pay the hundred and seventy-four dollars over the slip. All check every single day of the month for, so for November, for example. November was a total of nine hundred dollars, so our share was four hundred and fifty. And there's three times that he had to plow, that was it. The rest of it was all slip check, slip check. So I kinda broke it down, and the difference, if we paid the plowing versus paying what we paid. We would've saved seven hundred and two dollars for the last three months, if we didn't pay the slip check fall, whatever. So I understand why they want to continue how it is, so that they can ensure. That the clinic is getting cleaned up properly, I understand that.
Except, is it?
Except for, yeah, that too, and.
You you can't, for a while there, and I don't know how it is now, but it it was so narrow to get up to the clinic.
Well, um, he turned us four hours for snowbank abatement, so. That should be taken care of now, hopefully, though they should be pretty near melted by now, but. But anyways, um, so my proposal to Libra is fine, continue to plow, but we are no longer paying just half of the bill, we'll pay for salt, sand, plow. That's.
It makes sense to me, that's.
Because.
Or, or when they do the slip check. Are they?
That is to do nothing.
Right, they're just driving.
They drive through, if they see any icy spot, they start laying salt down.
No, because then they charge us for that. This is literally to just.
So they charge eighteen dollars, you said, to do a slip check, so they drive through, if they have to put salt, they charge more.
Right.
So you're talking about seven hundred whatever dollars is just the eighteen dollars that they charge.
Right.
Uh, where they didn't find any ice.
Right.
So, but they're checking the whole parking lot, that's the argument, correct?
Supposedly. And I would even argue, fine, check out, because. I mean, I understand where they're coming from, but them having a clinic is not the town's responsibility, yes, it is a good thing for the town to have. But to pay an extra seven hundred and two dollars.
I mean, I guess I would say.
To just plow.
I would say. Approach them and see if they're open to that arrangement, and we can discuss if they're not, because I would hate to have them say, fine, like.
Yeah, and the other thing is, you know, I can understand, like.
Oh, but just say.
If, uh, you know, in their shoes. That there's no delineation in the parking lot where, let's say, a patient is going to the clinic. And they park in on the town side, and it's, it's not checked for slip fall. And and something happens, so it's almost like, do we need signs up there, like this is town parking?
Private property.
Well, no, but like, he's not.
Checking, they can just check, I mean.
Right, because. True. You're literally driving through our side anyways, and if you have to stand. You can then bill us for the sand anyways, so like, we are literally talking about them using their eyeballs. While they're driving through our side, and I just can't fathom.
If I could make a good horse, I would make you a good.
You're dying.
No, I I think it's.
At least the conversation to be like, okay, this is, and then, you know, like. When he charges for, and the whole putting salt down on the sidewalks, he doesn't do it in front of the gym. But we're paying for that, so like.
And they have issues with their loader charge.
Their four hours?
I, yeah, I've seen kids that have bigger buckets in their sandbox than that.
Well.
Cause every time they do, they don't move the bank back, all they do is they, they roll it up and it falls down, they roll it up and it falls down. Until Steve goes up there and then pushes it back.
Well, we paid three hundred dollars to have him push it up, so.
I'm all for your proposal, okay, good. Did you just do? No, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't just being a jerk, and you guys are actually thinking wrong.
No, it's taxpayer money.
Hey, this is Glenn, just a comment that, does it make any difference that the library is in the building? Something to think about.
Good point.
Well, like, if it was just the library, we wouldn't pay eighteen dollars a day to go patrol the library.
That's specifically for.
For the clinic.
Right, because of the clinic.
Like, we would still plow and salt and sand it, and like, we're, we're, I don't propose we change that.
And if the librarian showed up and it was slippery, he might call down and Steve might go up and.
Or he might take his bucket that he has next to the door and sprinkle it in front of the.
And it's not open every day.
And it's not open every, it would be no different like than us coming into work here.
Yeah, cause if it was just our parking lot.
No, Steve would just, if he noticed it was slippery, he would say.
If it was snowing, he would plow, like.
No, I think it's worthwhile, I mean, I I guess at the end of the day, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I'm not gonna start a battle.
That's, that's.
But.
It doesn't hurt to add.
So at least the conversation.
Yeah.
Did you wanna go back to bid policy or?
How about you guys start on the fire department piece, and I will go print it off while you guys are doing it.
Okay, um, um. So I, next on the agenda is fire department grants and the junior firefighter program, and. I'm not sure what we're doing there, so help me.
Well, the, it's mostly discussion.
Discussion, okay.
Yeah, I think we just, I I'd like to hear more about it, first of all, like, I like. The junior firefighter program, I think, sounds great, what's? What's sort of?
They've always had a junior program.
Right, exactly.
Um, it just, they, because those kids that are still doing that, they get the training and then.
And he gave me.
A lot of my future.
Right.
Right.
Chuck, we talked about it last time, oh, was this, okay.
That's all one package.
Cool, so it's, I mean.
We we discussed last time, we just needed like guidelines and what it would look like so we could approve it.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see any reason not to have one, I think the reason why, when it was posted about before. I think that's why there was a reaction, like, was this ever discussed?
Well, I think, so, they decided to post it, they always have.
Right, and and I was always aware, all, like, I had a lot of friends that were on it, when, you know.
I, and I think this, this one is outdated. You know, there is a new updated one from the state.
All the state is, is good.
But the guidelines, yes, but also, the town has no guidelines for. How things are gonna be conducted, you know. What I would like to see is the junior firefighter come in with his parents, meet with you, some of the firefighters, maybe Elena. Explain to them exactly what their kid is going to be doing. So that they know what he's getting into, so it's just not some kid that's. Not tell his parents, the parents need to be aware, cause he's a marshal.
Right, his parents have to sign it anyway.
Has to sign it anyways, there needs to be. I'm not gonna say definite policies. But some stipulations as to. If the junior firefighter does something he's not supposed to. Say he gets, gets arrested, gets in trouble. Brings drop at school, those, there are stipulations that that could possibly have him kicked off from junior.
Correct, but my, I think as soon as we can't pull their records from school. They grades and all that, we can't pull that, it's a law.
The other departments do.
Never seen a department do it.
Okay, well, they they do. Or if they violate something while they're working as a junior firefighter. Their parents need to be notified of that, they should be brought in. You should sit down with both the child and the parents and discuss what's gonna happen. Because ultimately, the town, or you guys in the town is responsible for that kid. And likewise for a firefighter that puts a junior firefighter someplace where they're not supposed to be. There's got to be discipline for that firefighter also.
Stipulations there from the state law, what they can, what they can't, as far as going to calls. Exactly, now, as long as their parents sound professional, we can take them in a fairer field and they're trained.
They're trained, yes. Were they?
Chuck, was this the old Monson Fire, uh, Junior Firefighter?
I think that's the one that's in our, that's our juice.
Okay, is it probably an older one?
Nope, that's the one that's in our SOG, I believe. And like you said, I just printed out the state of man law, what they could do, what they couldn't, as far as age.
I know it's getting late and my brain is getting mushed, um. Can I propose that we we review that and and come back, um. Hate to like put it off again, but I just don't wanna rush through it right now, um, for us to be able to approve it, I mean. Firefighter, I mean, I think our fire department has our support in terms of, this is a good program, we need to do it. Um, but I don't know to.
No, I guess, I guess my whole big thing is that we already have it.
Yeah.
So we never get rid of that, so I'm just bringing stuff to you guys, so you guys know what's going on.
Okay, I don't know if we're feeling like we just need to review this and if there's any questions.
I just don't feel like this is really up to today's standards. Thing, thing, things have changed over the years, they're not quite as lax as they used to be, there's a lot more responsibility, liability on the town itself.
Right, they're, they're becoming down employees just like us.
They are town employees, but they are more vulnerable to.
Correct, there's certain things they can do and certain things they can't do.
Because if you got hurt, say you tripped that in an accident scene or something, you sprained your ankle. Oh, she would say, well, okay, yeah, that happens, if a junior firefighter does it, dude's not gonna say, well, that just happens, they're gonna start looking into it.
They, like you said, they're covering under everything that we are, as long as they're at calls that they're supposed to be at, and that's the only calls that they can go to. Is what the law allows them to go to.
Yes.
Could, could I propose that, I I don't, I I don't wanna push this off another month, but, um, and we used to have two meetings a month. Previously, could we take a look at this in the next two weeks and, um, maybe have a. A quick select board meeting after the, um, March twenty-seventh meeting even, just to. Meet on this, be official on it, would that work?
Sure.
Or, I I mean, is there a rush right now?
No, I have one coming and that's.
Yeah.
Wants to get out.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, and this time of year, right, I know, so. If that is agreeable?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so we will.
I'll be here in a bit, so.
Okay, so, let's aim for March twenty-seven to have reviewed it and. Meeting. Sorry, another meeting. Alright. Was there, oh.
I I think the only other question that I know I had was about, um, I'm glad you're applying for grant. I think that's great, I would just curious to to learn more about, uh, the the thinking about. Applying to get a side-by-side, what what it's needed for, like, what the the costs are. If there's something that would be more, um. More necessary, cause I'm I'm guessing it's a fair chunk of change, but is it just a program that does side-by-sides, or is, could we have applied for anything? Okay.
Decided, we were gonna buy one anyway, whether we had a buy it or to raise money for it, but anyway.
So what?
One, we don't have a snowmobile.
Right.
So this one comes with tracks, the one I done, and tires.
Okay.
We can use it for rescue, we can use it for forest fire. Insert and rescue. So rather than buy a snowmobile, and then turn around and buy, what we have the A T V that was donated, which works most of the time.
So we talked, and that's what we decided, we would write one grant for. So that.
Is it a non-matching grant?
There's no, no funds from the town at all. And that, you know, I'm not saying you guys don't need a side-by-side. My position on grants is, they should be written to offset the tax burden of the town. You know, a lot, some of your most important things, your turnout gear, your, your air tanks, your hose. Um, any of that stuff that is gonna, has an expiration date, if you know, in two years, we're gonna need. Five lengths of hose, six sets of turnout gear, some radios, whatever. You write that grant, you get those that year, you have that constant rotation of new stuff coming in. So that the money in your budget can be set aside for those big purchases. And. I don't know what the town has for equipment, because we haven't seen an inventory list. But I will guarantee you that there's a lot of stuff that this town doesn't have. That they, that they could use on, you know, infrared cameras, airbags, extraction equipment. That stuff that's gonna be used, or have the possibility of being used more frequent than. The side-by-side, which I would say, I'm not opposed to you guys having side-by-side at all.
Depends what we have for calls.
It depends what you have for calls.
They have written.
And this, and this kind of goes back to our original discussion about. When we were gonna allow you to write grants, as long as we were informed and gave approval.
No, I have to find the right grants, you told me to write all the grants I could write.
With our approval, you were involved in the conversation at that time. With our, with our approval. Because I've got a resident that comes up to me and says, oh, so we're getting a side-by-side. And I say. No, we didn't discuss anything. And then Elena tells us that you're applying for it. So, okay, we need to have that discussion, while it's already been sent in. So now when it shows up and that resident says, I thought you said we weren't getting side by side. What do I tell? I'm sorry, I I didn't know anything about that money. That does not.
But it goes for, there's no money from the town.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if the money's coming from the town.
Well, sometimes, Aaron, I don't have time to sit here and discuss, I would be waiting for a meeting with you guys to write grants. That grant I wrote for the side by side, I had one day to submit it that day, had to be postponed that day. When I got to the grant to look it up, I had one day to write it.
Well, like I said, our original conversation was you were gonna be allowed to write grants with board approval.
Okay, I was under the impression that I asked if I could write grants. Without having to come every time, because if that's the case, I'm gonna miss a bunch of grants.
You don't necessarily have to come to a meeting, but you can tell Elena, Elena can tell us, and we can say, yeah, go for it. Because ninety nine point nine percent of the time, we're not gonna have a problem, but we have to know.
So just so you know, I'm writing another grant for gear, besides the one I already wrote.
Do you have a copy of the grant?
I do have a copy of that grant.
Would you like to see it?
I'm comfortable if Elena knows, um.
Obviously, but that's my big thing is that, this is the drug that I have, Elena and I talk all the time.
Right.
So she's normally aware of what's going on.
Right, and she communicates with us.
So this this next one is Gary sent this grant, it's eight sets of turnout gear, a washer, and a dryer.
Good.
With no matching funds from the town. With this matching funds, I would say, come to you guys and say, you know, can we do this? So to me, the sideways that was something that we can use all the time, so.
Okay. Oh, I think that, uh. Yeah, I think. Touching base, understanding where where you're going is important. I think that makes sense, um, I get that there's sometimes this time constraint.
Like you said, I didn't know about like, I'll come and grant.
Right, oh, how how much is that grant written for?
Uh, thirty nine thousand two hundred forty one dollars.
And am I correct that it includes a trailer?
Not for that one.
Not for that one?
Nope, that was, that was the one we were gonna break through, fire out subs.
So what, what's the plan?
If we have to buy a job, we'll buy the job for us.
Okay, and you have like through the budget or through.
Nope.
Money raised? Okay. Um. When do you hear?
Uh, the first part of it, they open it, um, April fifth. They look at it and that if. We're gonna get it, then they'll send us for the rest of the information.
And I heard, like Elena explained that, um. It's the side, the side by side can handle six, six folks, including, um, medical, so.
Correct.
Right.
Because right now, when it's done, we have nothing.
Right.
Right, unless one of the guys brings their own sub, we have the rest of the sub to go with it, but.
Okay, any other?
Well, I think, I think part of the the struggle, Chuck, and please understand that we value the hard work you're putting in. I think part of the struggle is. While I understand the nature of what you guys do is change dramatically from. When I remember all the guys that worked at Moosehead going to calls and it was all fires, there weren't a lot of other things, um, it's the. I would like to be sure that we continue to communicate, I think that you're communicating with Elena here all the time. I know you've been in a lot and and you meet with Elena, um, and so we'll do a better job of. Or I know I will, reach out to Elena and find out if there's any updates, anything, um. I think it's important that we have the equipment. That we absolutely need, you know. If you're saying we we need this, then I'll I'll trust you that that's accurate. And I I hope that it gets used, um, and that it's not a piece of equipment that just sits, cuz it's important that we have the things that we that that we need, right? Um, so, uh, I mean. But again, I I don't wanna beat another horse to.
I'm like, like you said, you guys have questions, I have no problem actually.
And I, and I think, you know, this is work in progress for all of us in terms of, um. Trying to look ahead with things and we, you know, ideally, you know, in the future, working on like. A wish list for the fire department, so we know, oh, this is, this would be great, you guys really need these these items, this equipment. And, um, and then we know it it's pretty clear, like when you write, go for a grant on something. It's on that list, let's, you know, so.
Well, you said, a lot of grants are very specific.
Yeah.
Grant depression number for turnout gear was. He was a hundred departments that they given four sets of turnout gear, that's almost what that's period, that's that I asked for nothing, that's what it is.
Right.
Do we?
So expand that wish list, right, in the future, so it's, everything's on there, but.
Do you have a, like in in this, when I was a teacher, I would be issued a whole list of equipment every fall serialized. When at the end of the school year, I would turn all that in, serial numbers had to match. The next fall, I would show up and they would reissue me the same stupid equipment, like, do you, how do you account for, and and I can ask you off the.
Well, no, no.
Not in the middle of a meeting, like, how do you account for?
That's all been.
Equipment that you give to people.
We're all in the process.
Oh, I was gonna say, we we have had this discussion and and we've. We know that things have not always been done the way that they should be done.
It's a work in progress.
It is a work in progress, but we definitely have had this conversation and I. Told him, I'm more than willing to come over and sit down and write down everything that we have, so that we have a list to base things on.
Well, then my 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 thought behind that is that when you have that ability to account for every piece of equipment. Then you can come, can come up with a plan for replacing an equipment on a schedule, which I, okay, cool, I like, then then. I'll stop. Beating the horse.
What was the dying horse sound?
I can't do it.
I did too.
Alright.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
I know you spend a lot of time here, so.
Lately, I've been, yeah. But, um, the only other thing I wanna bring up is that. You know, it was brought to my attention that someone asked about medical goal. Just so everybody's aware, that is not okay. And if one of the guys gets caught giving information to somebody, that's not my.
It's covered by HIPAA.
Right.
Correct.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Please continue to reach out if you have concerns.
Oh, I will, like, like you said, same thing with you guys, if you guys have any questions, if I don't have the answer, I will get you the answer.
Alright, do you wanna wanna jump back to bid policy, right?
Yes, okay, so I think that out for you guys.
So this was done, how many years ago, was this the, the first bid policy the town ever had?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Cuz Ryan had said that it never had been.
No.
No, it's like.
I seem to remember this was the first one. Do we know reasoning for it?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, it was to hold the town manager responsible. That that would be.
I believe you're right on that. And also they put in there that the two thousand dollars, because they wanted, you know, just multiple bids, this particular slot board especially wanted. Multiple bids, which is a good idea, and what problem is now, or the big problem now, is this the two thousand dollar threshold there is is a little unreasonable these days. Cuz things just cost.
Two thousand or the twenty five hundred?
Twenty five hundred, yeah, which which just isn't really reasonable under.
And on topic that we we. We don't have a lot of choice, no, um, and.
No, just like with. It like this says, um, if three bids cannot be obtained, the select board can extend the deadline or work with bids received.
Well, there's no. That turns around to bite you every single time.
And so somebody actually told me the other day that putting something up to bid automatically adds twenty percent.
I was just gonna say that, I I've heard that as well.
I can honestly say that, yes, it does, if somebody asks me for a bid, I'll tell them it'll be way cheaper if I do it timing materials. Because I know how much it's gonna cost me, I'm gonna put in extra to cover my butt.
Right.
If something changes.
Right.
It's an own fact.
Right, so. And you don't always get the the bids from the companies or individuals that.
Would be ideal, maybe.
And and in so many cases, since I've been here. I've had people flat out tell me they won't do the bid process, I've had people say, well, I walked.
Through the gym roof when we first started looking at that, correct?
Yeah, and and or say, yeah, I walked away from Monson because I I'm not dealing with their bid process or. There's so many times I've heard that and it's not helping us.
So what's the proposal? Can we just get rid of it?
In this moment in time, I feel that way, yes.
Yeah.
At first, I was thinking maybe we can reword it, we can, um.
It seems it ties to our hands and it costs us more.
It does, and there's, um. You know, like. So long as it's practical, small purchases more than one thousand dollars require that three businesses be in submit quotations. So that means even my laptop, going through Sierra, who is our I T people, I can't just go to our I T people. I have to call what, Best Buy or like, I I don't even, it doesn't make sense.
It doesn't, and and I believe you're you're right, it was. It was originally to.
Make somebody do their job instead of biting the bullet and telling them to do their job, is my true story.
Can I say that I think we trust our town manager a little bit more than we trust.
Thank you, Justin, thank you.
And I I I mean, I think it's, it it's something we can revisit if we see a problem develop, like, cuz Elena's buying a laptop that they keep.
When Elena goes broke.
Yeah, uh, or or, you know, Marty, or are you the only purchaser, you think?
I'm the only purchaser, well.
Me and Marty are teammates.
I know, so, you know.
So technically, me, you're honest.
And suddenly Monson has a fishing boat across.
Me and Marty, me and Marty are.
Have a margarita truck before we have to leave, right?
Is that what the the, um, the question to Kent about food trucks was about?
No.
I actually already explored the margarita truck and there's ways around it.
It's actually a marker, I'm sorry, we are way off.
But you have to be invited, you can't just like go set up a margarita truck, you have to be invited.
You're invited.
You're on beach, yeah.
Aaron, you have any thoughts on this?
I don't, I don't like the bid process, but the policy, I think the town should be up to the side, they know who the good contractors are.
Absolutely.
They know what they're gonna get for work.
And so often, you can't get three bids even if you want them here, like it's it.
And and it's it's monetary, it's based on money rather than the quality of who you're.
Yep.
Contracting necessarily, right?
Right.
Yeah, cuz every everybody looks at you weird if you go with. The highest priced person.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's almost like black olive.
They don't, don't comprehend that, hey, guess what, maybe you're gonna get a better job.
Yeah, also, this is not saying that we can't put things out to bid, so if we want to, we can.
Yeah, so do we need a motion?
Yeah, what do we need to?
Yeah, I don't know how to like dissolve it and make it go away, um.
Put it in the trash.
They just.
Put it in the. So they they just voted to make it, so.
So I would make a motion to eliminate the bid process from town months.
I'd second that. Further discussion. All in favor?
Do we need to like make another one and put like, uh, what what do they do with flaws, um? What is the word?
Present.
Yeah, but there's a.
We're just continuing.
Discontinued. Resolve, no, hey, Alexa, what's it called?
It literally says it on, like, you know, the statutes that have been like. On the statute, like, it says it, uh, appeals.
Appeal?
Repeal.
Repel, there there we go, I was so close, I could literally see it.
Repealed.
Repealed.
Alright.
So we're not eliminating, we're repealing. I I'm gonna. I feel like we should make it like, as crazy as it sounds, have something signed.
Yeah, no, do it, write repealed on that, and put the date, and we'll sign it.
Um.
It was also minutes.
Yeah. We 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 voted on it. Did you vote on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I just did, I just missed that whole thing. We just say repeal in it, do we need another motion?
No, I changed the word eliminate to repeal, so it's in minutes.
Alright. Alright, where are we, Elena's new contract. My husband's waiting for me to pick him up at the hospital, so he said I have to be.
Alright, um, so the only thing that which this is good that we're actually doing this, because it changed my attention that. The only contract that I have was the insurance. So we never redid.
Oh, my word.
Yeah.
How did we miss that? We did.
Did we? Can we also.
See us and address her.
Right, we did, it's in the minutes though, so I feel like, at the next twenty seventh one, well, I'll have it ready and they can sign it.
Or even next Thursday, we have a couple of budgets.
True, yeah.
So, um, we forgot the treasure oath, which was the whole reason why we did oaths last time, go figure.
That's right.
Yeah, I was looking through them and I'm like, for real, how did we miss that up, but. You you guys voted on it, so all you have to do is sign it, so next budget meeting, I will have an oath that you guys can sign. Uh, but for now, the only thing I changed in it was the insurance.
Yeah. Did you sign these?
Define her hidden finger.
Yeah.
Where you give me.
She can buy whatever she wants.
Including the margarita truck.
That's right. Well, originally, my margarita truck was gonna be in in Brown Hill, but. They said, well, actually, it was the state that. Brown Hill was for it a hundred percent, I love a margarita truck, but the state was like, you have to be invited and you can't stay more than, there's so many consecutive days and.
Is there any issue with the fact that if you're.
Drinking and driving, you mean, because, um, you can literally.
Well, people are gonna drive to the food truck or to the margarita truck, sorry, we're.
Yeah, that's not a.
We're chit chatting.
But but he's reading and doing the same thing.
Yeah, no, I I.
Um, I think you have to just make a motion, sign it, or just sign it, I don't even care.
John just texted me chop, chop, chop.
Do I need to, um, make a motion before signing?
Um. I guess it could occur, make a motion to accept the new contract.
Well, you guys have.
And and we talked about.
But yeah, I thought the same thing, but, um, like Applebee's, you can take your alcohol to go, and like you can order.
You can't do that every.
You can, they just, this is the fine print, okay, they can't give you a straw.
Ooh, that's different.
I'm for real.
That Denver one, I tried to.
But was it pre-COVID?
Was it pre-COVID, because COVID changed those rules.
That's when they started.
I don't drink anymore, so yeah, it was pretty cool.
Yeah.
I did, I stopped drinking before COVID.
Because that, getting a.
I would not be alive today.
Yeah. That's good, huh? Also, drinking is like very bad if you have dark.
True, so thank God I don't.
One of. My bestie friends back in the day was that one that I guess.
Do you want to, okay, I'm gonna just discuss.
Rock.
He only changed. Yeah.
It's more dangerous.
Right, right. They need margaritas, cuz they have.
That I I take it that everything is a save except for item ten when we talk about insurance.
Yes.
That's it looked the same.
I looked for secretive things.
It said you're gonna buy me a a new car.
A new laptop.
Yeah.
So we sign this?
I'll make a motion to accept the um new contract for town manager. Thank you. For hanging in there with us.
Almost to the bitter end.
They don't wanna see the bitter end.
Alright. Leave my little puff of dust and run away now. Oh, what time is it?
Oh, we have to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adjourn. All in favor? Uh seven, what is it?